You're live.
Robert, you ready?
Yeah.
You're good to go. We're good. All right, we'll call them into order. Chris, would you call the roll, please?
Rob Brigham.
Yes.
Mike Cantak.
Yes.
Brett Eadie.
Yes.
Laura Iverson.
Yes.
Alex Shaka.
Yes.
Renee Philmeyer.
Yes.
Okay, if you'd stand and join us in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, first item is recognition of the open meeting floor. There's information on the wall. If there's any questions, you can ask. Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. Next item is the approval of the agenda. Any changes? And if not, is there a motion to approve? Motion seconded, discussion. Chris, would you call the roll, please?
Mike.
Yes.
Brett.
Yes.
Laura, yes. Alex.
Yes.
Renee, yes. Rob.
Yes.
Okay, next item is the minutes of the January seventeenth meeting. Is there a motion to approve? Motion seconded, discussion. Chris, would you call the roll, please?
Mike.
Yes.
Brett.
Yes.
Laura, yes. Alex.
Yes.
Renee, yes. Rob.
Yes. Okay, next item is approval of the claims. You have the additional ones that were submitted as well. Is there a motion to approve all but the NSPRO and the EDILON service?
I have a question.
Yes.
What are all of the textbook loan items? What is all of them?
So textbook loan with the parochial school in town, they have the ability to go through the textbook loan program. The textbooks that we use, they can then purchase, correct?
They they basically rent them from us. So we pay upfront and then we receive reimbursement from the Department of Education for those for those textbooks.
Sometimes they take full advantage of it, sometimes they don't as far as accessing the program.
But we get full reimbursement?
Yes.
Any other questions? If not, is there a motion to approve all but the NSPRO and EDILON service claims? Motion seconded, any further discussion? Chris, would you call the roll, please?
Laura, yes. Alex.
Yes.
Renee, yes. Rob.
Yes.
Mike.
Yes.
Brett.
Yes.
Is there a motion on the EDILON service claims? Motion is there second?
Second.
Motion seconded, any discussion? Chris, would you call the roll, please?
Alex.
Yes.
Renee, yes. Rob.
Yes.
Mike.
Yes.
Brett.
Yes.
Laura, yes.
Okay, is there a motion on the NSPRO insurance claim for a hundred dollars? Motion seconded, discussion. Chris, would you call the roll, please?
Laura, yes. Alex.
Yes.
Renee, yes. Rob.
Yes.
Mike.
Brett.
Brett.
Yes.
Okay, moving on. You got the treasurer's report. Any question about the information provided by the administration? Hearing none. Moving on. Nothing on their policy review. Okay, we'll move on to the administrative reports. Ben?
Good evening, everybody. You have my full report. Let me know if you have any questions about that. I also wanted to mention that a week from tonight is our kindergarten parent meeting, so that's the meeting we have for parents of prospective kindergarteners. We don't have any numbers yet on what we think that class is going to be, but that'll happen next week. Any questions?
Questions for Ben? All right, thank you, Ben. Shelley is at a conference, so she's not here this evening. She submitted her report. If you have any questions, you can ask Brandon or we can we can contact Shelley directly. Moving on to Mark.
Just a few, I just want to point it out. On my report, I listed some activities that were going on. One was the male school student council exchange that I wanted to mention. We created that within the Trailblazer Conference. The principals did. It's basically a student council exchange program where we we went to Beatrice Middle School on February eleventh, had a chance to meet their students, look at some of their activities, and and just kind of get to know their school. Beatrice will then come to Wahoo on March eleventh, and we'll kind of do the same thing. We'll host them and go through some of the programs of our school. Next year, we'll do it with a different conference school, so we thought it was a pretty neat program. The kids had lots of fun. I put put some pictures in there for you, so. Other than that, I just wanted to point that out, so.
Okay. Any questions for Mark? All right, thank you, Mark. Robert?
Good evening. We partnered with GoFan. I put the link in there. It's the same platform that the NSA uses to be provide a digital ticketing platform. We'll still take cash at all of our at our contests and and but does provide people another option in which to gain entry into those events. There's tons of potential for that. The best is best thing is there's no cost to the school district to be able to use the platform. There's a fee that applies to those that are purchasing those things. Last week, this week, next couple of weeks, we're busy with activities. Basketball, girls and boys wrestling. Kaylee Ricketts was forty-seven and oh, state champion, first time in a girls sanctioned wrestling tournament. Chair and dance, went out to Grand Island and brought home three runner-up trophies, and the Wahoo Quarter Champions was all day Saturday, so, which I got up here for the middle school stuff and cannot stay up till nine-thirty to come back for the high school, so. But yeah, lots of stuff going on, and hopefully our boys and girls teams can get down to the state tournament this year.
Okay. Any questions for Robert? All right, thank you. Josh?
You you have my full report there. A few points of emphasis the last few months. Again, ELA curriculum review. We continue that process. Our K-five ELA teams has recently visited Oakland Craig, and then we'll spend some time in Davidson City. It's a small group of teachers that go, about, I think, five teachers and six total staff. Continuing math standards review at NDE. I'm hearing that a potential first draft will come out in April, so we're looking forward to that. A few dates to put on the calendar reminders. April fifth, state assessment for juniors, ACT, and then Wahoo Elementary fourth graders' Nate assessments on March fourth. So initial communications have gone out to all families involved, and we'll send another follow-up here shortly as well.
All right, any questions for Josh?
My name is ELA Stanford.
English Language Arts. We used to say reading.
Say what?
We used to say reading.
Shut up, phonics.
All right, thank you, Josh. Vernon?
Real quickly, our pre-enrollment, it's already getting done for eighth graders. He's working on freshmen right now for next year, trying to get numbers for classes. The other thing that I put in there, about a month ago, we changed our tardy tardy policy in the high school. We're really struggling getting people on time, kind of changed our changed how we do it. Some of it had to do with it was written down. It was a little bit clunky. We got a little little printer where it timestamp everything and it prints it into our school. Seems like it's working really well. It's been pretty efficient. There's kind of tiers on what what the what consequences are depending on how many how many times you miss class, but it seems like in the last month, tardies are way down, so we feel good about it, so. Any other questions for me?
Questions for Vernon?
I do have a question. I would build upon. So we have a middle school student council. Do we have a high school? And if so, if not, what's the history?
Well, the history was it was gone before I got here, for sure. So we have talked about that this year, a little bit about, I'm not really sure why, and we asked about that last year when I got here and that was new, and I think the real the real part of that was is that they, I don't know if they felt like they they didn't do a whole lot, so it just kind of dissolved. So we've talked about ways we could incorporate a student council and get them involved, so I think that's a good idea.
Do we know if our conference affiliates have one?
Uh, we haven't. We we haven't ever talked about that at the at the high school level, so. But it's something that we're meeting here in the next month. It's something I can ask the principals. When we do that?
I mean, it's just another leadership opportunity for students.
Absolutely, and I I think it's something that we're probably missing out on. We've we've discussed it at different times on how we could make it meaningful though if we bring back in, and and I think that's the challenge, is figuring out where it fits and how it goes, but I think it's something we need to look at.
I have a question. What is the status of reviewing the class rankings and the the class?
I talked to Brandon just recently about that, and and I think we talked about maybe sending something out maybe before the next board meeting and then bringing it in the next board. I think I'm pretty much where we want to be, at least for next year, and then let you guys look at it before the next board meeting, and then we'll we'll go through. I don't know if I changed as much as I thought I would when I first went, but I I feel good about making some adjustments to make it maybe maybe better express what we want from what our class rate, what we want our class rate to be. Try to politically say that the right way. Yeah, but I but next month, I'm going to have I'm going to have everything ready for you guys, so.
Any other questions for Vernon? Thank you, Vernon. Brandon?
Okay, all I'm going to hit on tonight is some legislative update. Several bills still up for consideration as far as education goes. Talking to Kurt and Jason Braun, they had been tracking about a hundred and forty bills that were introduced that directly impact education, so they have their work cut out for them. Some of those, like LB eight ninety, which was a school funding one from Columbus, and eight ninety-one, the funding mechanism, they're dead at this point. They died on the floor. Eleven forty-three, eleven forty-six, those are bills that impact any sort of alternative financing. They haven't come out of committee yet. I don't know whether they will or not. I think eleven forty-three is the last day of committee hearings, so we'll see at that point. There's bills on multicultural education, the status of the Department of Education, library selections. There's others that haven't moved out of committee. What does get out of committee? It seems like they get stuck on the floor a majority of the time, and they never get to that closure. I did go down and testify on eleven forty-six. I'll be back to testify on eleven forty-three. I think that period is March first. Keep you guys up to date of anything pressing and upfront, but right now, most of it's in committee or waiting on the floor somewhere.
Any questions on the camera? Questions for Brandon?
Thanks for going up and testifying.
All right, so moving on. You got a couple items of communications, a thank you letter, similar to something we get every year, and a thank you note from Bishop Newman, actually, excuse me, Saint Wenceslas staff for recognition of of Catholic schools week, so. Also in communications, Kirk Penner is here from the State School Board. Kirk, I don't know if you want to introduce yourself or say anything more. I know you got a chance to say.
I don't have anything to say. My name's Kirk Penner. I'm your District Five State Board Education Representative, and I'm just making the tour of Beatrice last Monday here up in the sewer in New York. I'm from Aurora, so a lot of respect for Wahoo. I really do. Back in nineteen eighty-eight, as I watched the shot, you know, he went highs. I appreciate that. We won it in eighty-seven, and Wahoo ran it for the next power, ten years or whatever, so. A lot of respect for your school district. Thank you.
Thank you, Kirk. Okay, moving on. Audience comments at this time. Open it up to audience comments. If there are any, remind you, three minutes each, thirty minutes total. Opportunity to share with the board. Board generally listens. Just ask you to state your name and where you're from, and and I'll give you a sign when there's thirty seconds left or so. So if there's anybody that'd like to speak, just ask you to come forward and state your name and where you're from.
My name is Katie Howell. I'm the student teacher here at Wahoo this year. I'm from Royal Nebraska, so Western Nebraska, first high school. And just want to thank you for hosting me as student teacher, and I learned a lot while I've been here, so, yeah, I just want to say thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Others?
Thank you, Pearson Wahoo. At the last board meeting, Robert stated that there had been no decisions made on the building project. However, I have requested documents, and I feel that there has been more done than was been made public to the to the taxpayers. Questions have come up whether this is a large project or a phase project, and what is the actual number of classrooms being built. Another few comments, I had the documents I received, one of the school board members had their spouse review the project and provide input. Since this was allowed, I would request that anyone interested in the project be allowed to have all access to all meetings and all documents from this point forward. There was also a checklist enclosed, and that was from ESU five for the interlocal agreement. One of the questions on there said, has the school district attempted and did not pass at least two bond issues within the last five years? It says answer must be yes. However, for Wahoo, that would be a no. It also had a question that says, has the district allowed ample opportunity for community feedback regarding the creation of the interlock interlocal agency? It said answer must be yes, and I don't feel that is a yes here. So and there was quite a few emails and concerns about financing and the actual cost of what how it was going to be financed. I also have concerns about that. One of the comments, it says they will need to be looking at putting balloon payments at a seven-year increments, which covers the lease duration instead of fifteen years, and of course, that is concerning with what the interest rates are going and expected to do in the future. So my concern again is about being very to the public on what is actually going on and what this building project is about and what the cost is going to be, and to involve the taxpayers as that is where how it's going to be funded. Thank you.
Thank you, Vicki. Others? Okay, moving on to board committee reports. Anything there? If not, we'll move on to the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-three calendar. Vernon?
I'm going to go back real quick.
Sure.
So at our last foundation meeting, we're in the process of launching the foundation website, so that.
Okay. Vernon, calendar?
Okay, attached, you have the proposed calendar for twenty-two, twenty-three. Not a not a lot of changes. It looks very similar to what we did this year. You'll see three days teacher in-service at the beginning. You'll see taking Wednesday, Thursday, Friday of Thanksgiving. The last day of each semester is an early dismissal as opposed, excuse me, as opposed to a full day. Nothing? Oh, we have parent-teacher conferences in the fall. We're going to dismiss elementary early. Those two days to have time to schedule, and then when we do spring conferences, since it's only a single-day conference, we're going to go elementary no school on that day. Elementary typically gets ninety-five to a hundred percent attendance at parent-teacher conferences. In the fall, middle school and high school is okay. In the spring is less than okay, so we didn't see the need to dismiss early on that spring day or in the fall for those who high school. That was another bill that probably doesn't go anywhere, but Senator Erdman, I think it was, proposed everybody starting after Labor Day and having to be done by Memorial Day. Just for reference on our calendar, if we had to do that, I think you could take Thanksgiving Day off, you could take the week of Christmas off, and all those in-service days would disappear. We'd have school every day. That's what the calendar would have to look like to achieve that goal. But that's calendar we're proposing. Questions?
When when do we take President's Day off? I don't know if school districts do it. And if we do have, well, if we have school, are we doing anything to recognize the day itself for President's Day?
As far as?
In school, talking about about our.
With curriculum pieces?
Yeah, I'm just anything would would.
Any ideas there?
General.
In elementary, yes, we do.
Okay, good.
Social studies, I'm going to assume.
Yeah, and lots of extra opportunities are shared out with the staff.
It's never been proposed to take President's Day off.
I just know other districts do it, and I just wonder why. I know we've never had, but I'm just curious to why we have, or if we ever did.
Those same districts will take an okay day off, and they basically follow the federal holiday calendar. I have a question.
Yep.
Do you think we can ever move graduation off to Mother's Day?
Can we? You guys can do whatever you want with graduation. When I first got here, it seemed to bounce around to where graduation was like the first Sunday in May, which is really early. For planning purposes, I talked to the board and just asked for a consistent day, and having it on the Sunday, being Mother's Day, which we're planning at that time, that may be, can't change in the future. It's something I'd want to discuss with you guys, because it has much more to do with the view than the.
I think we used to alternate, try to try to a lot of times be the same weekend. We go Saturday one day, they go Sunday. I don't think we do that anymore, so we could switch it to Saturday. I always thought that was the reason why we did it that way, because we wanted to make sure people could go to both.
I almost think states have to.
You know, I'm talking to you, right?
I know, I could upgrade.
I almost think that has something to do with it. Why would it be Saturday?
Gotcha.
You you are correct, though. Years ago, we used to alternate the movement on, which one would go Saturday, the other one would go Sunday, but that's also the day when all of the all of the graduation parties were all after graduation ceremony, and now they hold them all like three weeks at a time.
Three?
Four, five. Yeah, there's a lot of weeks of graduation celebrations, so I don't know that that has as big of an impact on it anymore. Personally, I'm somewhat indifferent to it. If we were going to that Saturday or that weekend, seems to be about right in terms of time on the high school front.
I have it as the fourteenth through the nineteenth this year.
So the week after.
Week after.
I think a lot of moms would be happy.
I think a lot of moms would be happy. There's three hundred and sixty-five days a year. Only one of the owners' moms.
I have I have actually heard over the years, I've heard that go both ways. Some feel it's a real honor to have a graduation of their child on Mother's Day. Others would clearly like to see it differently.
I mean, this is the proposed calendar. We can amend it. That's up to you guys.
Laura, there's only two moms on the committee. Which were from the dads.
Should we know our wives right now? If you heard, it's okay?
Yeah, no, I think it's it's a good consideration. I would definitely like to see it moved off of Mother's Day.
Is there anything else on that Saturday?
On the Saturday?
District baseball.
Track meets. No. We we actually moved all of our track meets off Saturdays to accommodate all the club sports so that we could get kicked off a track.
When state baseball?
Fourteenth through the twentieth. What's the date this year or proposed for?
Check the sixth, seventh.
The seventh this year, we have baseball districts. And that's if you're playing district final.
Robert, do you have the twenty-twenty-three? Do you know those already?
I can look them up.
So I think for twenty-twenty-three, it's the fourth season. Yeah.
Oh, sorry.
It's being proposed.
Um, next year, baseball start, the baseball state tournament starts on May thirteenth and runs through the eighteenth.
Starts on Saturday. But but it's district baseball that would be in conflict.
Which you would have players that need to be.
Be that sad. I mean, it doesn't mean we can't do it, but it may cause a conflict in one of our activities.
Well, can we just keep that in consideration for future years?
Yeah. Absolutely.
What if it was even a Sunday after Mother's Day, even if it did have dang on? Not suggesting it's for this year. Is there a motion to approve the calendar as presented? So we've got a motion. Is there a second?
Second. Motion is seconded, any discussion? Any more discussion? Chris, would you call the roll?
Mike.
Yes.
Brett.
Yes.
Laura, yes. Alex.
Yes.
Renee, yes. Rob.
Yes. Next item is the facility projects update. There is a a meeting next Monday evening, six o'clock, same room, public meeting. That will be the the sole agenda item will be the facility, the project, potential project. As I shared before, and and certainly board members, if there's anything that I missed state or brand, please correct me, but at this point, we have hired a an architect. We have hired a construction manager. We have asked the architect, and they have presented us with a variety of options. We asked the construction manager to come back with basically kind of buckets of rough estimates of cost, so that would help us to narrow this down, and that is our goal at the meeting next Monday evening, is to narrow that down into a feasible project based upon available planning. So that meeting will be open here at six o'clock. It'll be a regular board, well, I mean, a special board meeting, but it will be an open board meeting, just as this one is.
Rob, just to clarify, have we hired an architect? I thought that was just for the master planning.
We hired an architect for the for the master plan, and we have not hired an architect to design the project at this point, correct?
And so they've probably taken us as far as they can take us under that master plan, right? I mean, I don't think they were charging us.
Right.
Is that right? And so reimbursement expenses?
Right. And so we are under we are under no obligation to them beyond the master plan, which they did at no cost. Correct.
And all the documents or designs that they've provided were based on the input that the Citizen Advisory Group, I don't know if that was the right name, from two or three years ago, provided input from staff. I mean, it was, that's where it all came from, right?
Well, first of all, I would clarify, I mean, there are no designs. There are schematics at best. I mean, they are just boxes. There is nothing that has any detailed set of plan or anything like that, not even a detailed outline of a potential building other than just schematics. And I think some of the ideas came from there. I guess, correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't I don't think that that was the only thing considered or should be by any means. Is that a fair statement?
Yeah, it staff, admin, board, committee, it took from a lot of places.
Because they went around, they did some staff discussions this time. Is that correct?
And I mean, I'm speaking for myself, but I think we we know what our top two concerns are. Cost, kids, space, and can capture. I need just so we all know that that's been on the radar for us for a long time. This isn't something we just decided that we would do. This has been out there forever. You know, I was just looking at Josh's, uh, our basically our Wahoo Public School report. Guys, Roman, we're at thousand fifty-six right now, okay? I'm looking and looking at the elementary school, looking at every number. Those aren't going down. You know, what I'm going to say about this, three years ago, when we tried to pass the bond, we were we passed, but we're looking to do it because we thought we would grow. We thought we would see this grow. It's here. I mean, it's right north, and those lots are being sold, and I know people that are already are calling about buildings, so. That's new families, the ones I've talked to, so. Looking at this, I I just think I we're we're doing what we're supposed to be doing right now. doing right now.
No comments from the board? Brandon? Okay. Uh, next item was discussed, considering taking the necessary action on RFP submitted by Olson Associates for topographical survey of the district campus site. Brandon?
So the, there was an initial work for meets and bounds that Olson did for BBH. Uh, now we need a full topographical, uh, rendering from the entire campus as, uh, plans are hopefully made going forward. Uh, gotta know what type of elevation changes we're dealing with, what type of watershed, all those pieces need to be a part of it. Uh, it does come at an expense. Uh, it's not to exceed $27,500, but regardless, it's gonna have to be done before anything going forward would happen.
Is this something we did the last time around?
How many, how many proposals did we get other than Olson?
BBH submitted from Olson. I didn't reach out personally to anybody. BBH went forward doing that.
And again, just to clarify, so BBH has not been hired to do any design?
At this point, no.
Right, so it feels like we're kind of walking a, a line here.
Right.
They want that done, but really that's if they get hired to actually design this, correct?
Yes. Either way, it's gonna have to be done.
Understood, understood. For the next one or for whomever we do. Um, does it seem like we should get more than just one proposal?
That...
I mean, is Olson the only one who can do this?
I'm sure there's others that could.
Was that just BBH's choice?
That, that was BBH's recommendation.
I think that's who BBH intends to work with as a sub for their site design and so forth. And they've got a survey, they've got a survey group, and so we went to them because their survey group then would work with their site design folks. So I think that's how that came about. Or that, that would be my, based upon my experience, that's what I would tell you came about.
I think Olson was at the, in our, in our breakout possessions, Olson was there, I can remember.
Yeah, they had, they had a site engineer.
Yeah, they had a site engineer.
We did some sort of, uh, a little graphic survey that, right, on, correct? I remember she was, uh, above the clouds. They would, they were the upper area, like...
Yeah.
It's not the same, but yeah, we did some, I don't think it was on the scale. And would this be like a Olson survey on steroids, to be able to show easements and power grids and everything?
So, yeah. I, I honestly don't know. I'm trying to, I looked at the attachment before, but I didn't look at that specifically. But I, for whatever reason, I can't, the attachment won't show up.
I can't. They would look for easements and power lines and some structural layers that we gave to...
Yeah.
For whatever reason, I mean, are there other things you noticed from them?
I'm sorry?
Was there other things you noticed in there? A question?
Yeah, I, I would have some changes or proposed some changes to their general conditions. So that's the other thing that I have to add from here before we had approved that.
Right.
One thing I would note is this is, this is the main thing I was looking at. This is an agreement with us, it's not with BBH.
Right.
So if BBH was not hired to go on and design the next phase, or, or to design any improvements, this would be with us, we could have it so that it's somebody else.
Yeah, I just like the idea of getting more than one number. And Rob, is the timeline on this about right? Seven weeks to do this scope?
Doesn't shock me right now.
Just...
Everybody's backed up.
Are there smaller players who can do these sorts of things? I mean, I know there's kind of just the, the big two, three, four that everyone goes to. Are there other smaller shops? Yeah, who are probably more competitive and maybe not as backed up?
Yeah, I don't know if you're gonna find them not as backed up. They might be more competitive, but then you may have an additional cost for coordination between Olson's and whoever does it for bringing those files into their system, whereas Olson's is going to do it. I feel weird championing Olson's here, given that they're one of our main competitors, but, uh, I don't know how to explain that other than, you know, everybody's got their own standards that they deal with internal. And so Olson's is gonna do it in a way that's going to go, you know, it's gonna flow to their site engineers, the way that they want to flow to their site engineers. Whereas if, if somebody else does it and they bring it into Olson's, Olson's is probably going to have to manipulate some things, uh, to meet their standards and so are fee for Olson's is probably gonna make it one, would be my guess. Given what they're talking about, I don't find this to be unreasonable. And that being said, I didn't ask our people, we're out of this, we have no intentions of being involved in this. I haven't asked anybody what appropriate fee would be, but my best estimate would be that that's not unreasonable for what we're asking them to do.
It, it just feels like we haven't even settled on BBH, right? BBH has Olson, it sounds like is their people. But we don't know if BBH is our group. So on some level, I think we need to make some decisions related to who our architect is going to be or a design firm is possibly, um, before we start figuring out. Because we could have, if we go to a different firm, maybe Olson isn't their choice and somebody else shouldn't have been doing this work. It, it feels like we're jumping ahead here and, and the first thing we need to do is get an architect on board. Is that going to be part of the special meeting or is that just a purely work session? Do you envision that next week?
I don't have a... I'll have more before we get there, but I don't have an answer yet.
I think our agenda will be set so that we can take action, if needed, on making decisions on scope of the project and those kinds of things. I don't think at this point that it was contemplated as to whether, at least I had that contemplated as to whether or not BBH would be, uh, anything regarding BBH would be decided at that point in time. And if you're going to be with BBH in regards to potential fee negotiations, should decide to go down that path? Is that fair?
Yes, the question I have, if we decide what table this, whatever, and, and to get some other pricing on this, how long does that take? In, in, in your world? So Brandon calls for, you know, two or three or four firms, whatever. What is that? What's that time? Because obviously Olson's ahead of the game because they've been, been a part of like BBH the whole time. If we choose, if we choose to go that, get some other pricing to see what it is, are we talking another month? You know, two months, uh, four weeks, three weeks? I, I, I guess that's... Or can we, or, or we can say not to exceed 27, but to take other bids and let Brandon make that decision at that time, where we say we won't exceed 27,500, but if we get alternate bids, he has the authority to take that other bid if he wants. So it'd be, you know what I'm saying, for the pricing part?
Mm-hmm.
That way we're doing our due diligence and also to, at, at least as a slowdown progress.
This is a pretty benign scope for someone to throw a number at it. I can't imagine it's gonna take a whole lot of time. I mean, it's a topographical survey.
Yeah, there's a lot of research that goes on to get to that point.
No, but I mean, a number.
There's a lot of research that goes on to get to 27,500.
Okay, fair enough, fair enough.
Yeah. I had guys spend a couple of, a couple hours today on a $1,500 survey, survey that we're trying to do for a foundation that's begging for a nothing fee. And, you know, the time that you've spent going through our house, figuring out what corners are available, what information is available, what other, what other, uh, surveys have taken place in the area, whether or not those corners are gonna be available to you, what utilities might be on site that you might have to locate, all of that stuff. It, it...
So Olson has already done all of that, like...
Uh, presumably, if they, I mean, I don't know for sure, but presumably if they're giving us that price, they're at least willing to live with it. Because they did put it in as a lump sum fee and not as an hourly, just an estimate. But I'm, I'm, I'm comfortable with whatever direction. I hate to get too deep on this particular one. I guess JY has stayed out of this. I don't want my influence to have, I don't want my influence to have any bearing on the direction that the board goes with engineering firm.
Is there any benefit to push this agenda item to the next meeting and have it be our same discussion?
Yeah. We, we certainly could. We could put it on the agenda for next week.
And just to clarify, nothing can proceed without this. Is this the first domino that needs to fall in order to...
Part of this, too, is for purposes of financing, is that correct? Is that not correct?
No.
No, I just said that was...
You're right.
Two, thanks.
Yep. Well, I have no problem with it, just to get it, get, get an idea of other firms that... It could, it could be an act item next week. I, I think that's a great idea. I have no problem with that at all.
Yeah, I, I mean, I just wanna be a good steward of tax dollars. That is solely what this is about.
Yep. Okay, put it on the agenda for next week.
Okay? We'll just move it to the next agenda. Okay, moving on, uh, we have four, uh, people eligible for the early retirement options. Brandon?
Yeah, uh, so the board has a temporary early retirement incentive plan that they can activate at any time. Offered this year, we have four eligible employees. One employee submitted an application for consideration, the other three declined the option, they're planning on being back next year. All were aware that it's a one-time offer. It's offered one time after they become eligible based on criteria. If they choose to turn it down, that offer probably does not come back again. Everybody's aware of that. So the recommended motions to approve the early retirement application for Linda Walker effective at the end of the 2021-22 school year.
Okay, is there a motion to approve?
Some.
Or letter of resignation?
Actually, just do the retirement, we'll do the resignation on the next action.
Okay. Okay, got a motion, is there a second?
Second.
A motion and a second? Any discussion? Chris, would you call the roll, please?
Mike?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Alex?
Yes.
Renee?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Okay, then moving on to personnel and resignations. Brandon?
Yep, uh, we have three resignations in front of us. Linda Walker, which we mentioned before, no school social sciences. Logan Langhold, 612 vocal music, has turned in a letter of resignation. He's got a job in Lakin next year, I believe. And then Wes Kramer down at the elementary is going to retire. Uh, so there would be action for those three resignations.
Okay, is there a motion to accept the resignation? Is that correct?
Some.
A motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion is second, any further conversation?
How many had Mr. Kramer as a teacher?
Four decades, he says.
Is it four decades? I was trying to figure out how long...
Forty-two years.
Forty-two years.
All right, Chris, would you call the roll, please?
Alex?
Yes.
Renee?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Okay, items for the next regular meeting. Brandon, will you require action on the graduation, uh, or the, the class rank?
It will, if we show, I, I don't believe so because I think what happens when we go through, it'll be in our, it'll be in the handbook. So when you, when you do action on the handbook, that way when we go through, if there's something we'd wanna change, there's still time to go back and change that.
Okay. So you'll just present it during...
I present it so you guys can see, and if there's questions or if we need to make changes, we can do that before we might deloss the team.
Okay. Okay. Personnel and, uh, building, anything at the building? Anything else?
Um, maybe something related to the lunchroom and the, the update, how the school year is, what's going for administrators, teachers, that are monitoring that.
Okay. Anything else? Motion to adjourn.
Someone...
A motion?
Second.
A second, any discussion? All in favor? Say aye. Aye, closed. We are adjourned.